Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think we're good to go.
All right.
All right, so, uh. Everyone's standing. I didn't say anything yet. Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's how predictable you are.
Sign up a good leader button.
That's where I'm going.
Let's have a little view of response.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. It's about seven forty-five. We apologize for the late start. Uh, we just came from executive session where we discussed non-union compensation. Uh, the first item on our, on our agenda is a resolution considering a request for an exemption, extension of chapter one fifty-eight, section two point one of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Hidden Falls.
Whereas on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a local law, uh, modifying the village code enacting a seasonal gas-powered, uh, gas-powered leaf blower ban from May first through September thirtieth, starting next year, May first, two thousand twenty-four. And whereas chapter one, the village code, uh, properties with at least five acres of, of property can apply to the village board for a full or partial extension or exemption of the local law. And whereas the application has been distributed to known eligible properties in the village of Rybrook and also placed on the Rybrook website. And whereas on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, representatives of Hidden Falls submitted an application for an exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as the considerations raised in the application from Hidden Falls, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Hidden Falls. And if there's any conditions, it would be built into the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I guess we hold off on the motion in a second till we hear this one out here. Hmm? Well, it's, I, it's just a request. I know it's not a, it's not a public hearing, but, um, do we have anyone here from Hidden Falls? Okay. Do we have someone representing here? Yes, please.
And if you could just, uh, talk to the, in the mic, that'd be great. Thank you.
I can only type. I can't talk. Um, I'm, good evening. I'm, uh, Kyle DeVito. I'm the principal of Katona Management Services. Uh, I'm the managing agent for Hidden Falls Homeowners Association. Uh, I'm also gonna identify Anthony Miss Camara, uh, who is the vice president of the Board of Directors of Hidden Falls. Uh, John Gettinger of Gettinger Woldingham Monteleone is the, uh, is a partner there, and he's the association's legal counsel. And we have Marco Gonkovs, who is the owner of Clean Cut LLC DBA Green Tech. So I may use those clean tech, or Clean Cut or Green Tech interchangeably, but it's Marco there. So, um, we appreciate you having us tonight. Uh, we are formally requesting a partial exemption and extension, um, through our existing landscape contract, which is in force until twenty twenty-seven. Um, just some overview. I want to just give you a brief overview of the association. So I have a picture up here, a Google image of this highlighted in red. So that is the Hidden Falls Homeowners Association. It is off of North Ridge Street. Um, it backs up on the north side here to Crawford Park. Um, on the west side, there is Wilton Road and Wilton Court that back up to it. And then there's also the, uh, the hotel down here on the southwest side. Um, Hidden Falls is comprised of sixty single-family homes, a clubhouse, a pond, a dam. Um, and we're on twenty-six point eight acres. Um, the HOA is governed by a board of directors who made up of members of the community. And originally, when this was delivered from the offering plan, which was filed with the state attorney general, uh, the association was responsible to provide landscape services for all of the lots on the, on the association. Um, that practice has been in place for over thirty years, even after it was turned over from the sponsor to the owner control. Um, and Green Tech is the sole, uh, vendor who's under contract to perform those services. Um, so Marco, I apologize. How long have you been there?
Very long. Two thousand, two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven. So in, um, Marco was previously under a five-year contract, which ran from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two before the law was passed. Uh, when that contract was up, the board of directors rebid the services. And in twenty twenty-two, that contract for the year was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, we solicited three bids for renewal. Due to inflation, increased labor costs and shortages, and just, uh, insurance requirements and general post-COVID financial pressures, we were met with a renewal rate of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, up thirty thousand dollars or twenty-three percent. And of the three bids we received, Green Tech was the lowest bid. Um, we also wanted to make a point that one of the vendors we solicited, which was Maple Leaf Associates, they have marketed themselves as a vendor who is moving in an electric direction. Their bid, which was submitted to you as well, was in at two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars or up sixty-two percent from where we were in twenty twenty-two. Um, so prior to this obviously being passed, and, um, obviously we're, the, the community has been more than happy to keep Marco around and is, would love to keep Marco around. Um, he was renewed for a five-year extension in twenty twenty-two, which runs through the twenty twenty-seven season. Um, right now, what we've, what we've received from feedback from Marco, and he's available to answer any technical questions on this, is based off the size of the property, uh, the topography of the property, the, um, efficiency of the existing electrical equipment, the battery life, and the number of hours that he has to have his crews spent on, on, um, onsite. It is not feasible for him to fulfill the obligations of his contract in the current law. Um, he's provided us with a rough estimate to add manpower to make up for the inefficiencies of, of the, of the new law, which would be met, um, with about an additional thirty thousand dollars a year in additional fees for us. Um, so that would bring us to a forty-five percent increase up from twenty twenty-two. Um, just some additional information that we want to sort of throw out here. Um, we are willing to incorporate certain sections of the property that he's able to service with electric equipment at this time. Um, but as far as the entire property itself, it's, it's difficult. So if I zoom in here, um, the association is made up of four roads. So you have, what the main entrance down here is Long Ledge, which comes up and runs through the whole property. There's Hidden Pond right in the middle. Park Ridge is at the top. And then Stone Falls Court is down here off of Ridge Street. And I'll zoom in. Actually, I can use this little screen. I'm gonna try this. So Stone Falls Court is down here. Um, this area is able to be serviced currently under electric equipment, and we would be willing to implement that, um, effective next year. Uh, it's also the only area that does not have a natural break or, um, meaning no woods, uh, or does not back up to the park or other neighbors. This is the closest in vicinity to neighboring homes and to the village itself. Um, so we can service this section, which is eight homes, um, immediately. The remainder of it for right now, we would ask for the, uh, for the exemption on. Um, let me just make sure. I want to make sure. So, um. In addition, Marco has provided some information on the equipment that he has. He has recently invested in Red Max EBZ seventy-five-hundred-dollar gas blowers, um, which have reduced emissions and increased fuel economy, uh, which puts them at sort of the top of the market from the gas-powered equipment that's out there. Um, so that's sort of the overview of his, of his side of this, of what we're able to service immediately. But we do want to note that there is a big, there's a big variable here in the middle, which we've been working on. Um, we are responsible for this large pond, and there's a large Class B dam which supports the pond here. And that is regulated by the Department of Environmental Conservation, who we work with every year to certify it, to pull permits. Um, there's, there's two main things that we do. We have a, um, aquatic vegetation management program. So we go into an annual contract with Pond and Lake Connection, who maintains the health of the pond, and that's filed with the DEC, and that's regulated by them. Um, and then the second is, just this year, the Department of Environmental Conservation required us to perform a, uh, upgrade to the dam itself, which the association paid in excess of sixty thousand dollars to perform this year. Um, so that was just completed this summer. Uh, so again, we, we do have a history of environmental compliance and working with regulatory agencies. And, um, just to kind of sum up our discussion here, we, we understand the intent of the law. We are willing to work towards the full compliance, but at the time right now, we are just asking for a partial exemption and extension, uh, for the reasons stated, uh, before me. Um, so if there's any questions or concerns, issues, we're happy to take them at that time.
Yeah, a couple of questions I have and, and a couple of comments as well. Um, but why, why that area? That's my first question.
I think.
Why is that area easily, more easily?
You can remove the blue on the bottom left. Just tap it and it'll just go away. Yep.
Well, I think for us, it's, it's a self-contained area over here. Um, it also, and Marco, I don't, I don't want to overstep if, if him. You could, yeah, you may want to answer that.
I'm just curious.
From, from our standpoint, if you, if you, I just want to say one thing before he speaks. When you look at the property, so the bulk of Hidden Pond Drive is all contained within the community. Most of Long Ledge is contained and not, with the exception of this one section here, where there is some arbivarian screening, there's not, um, there's not a lot of neighbors who are in close vicinity to this. And then back here, everything with, that's in homes that has to be serviced is all backs up to Crawford Park. So this area down on Stone Falls is actually right on Ridge Street. It's the closest to the village and has the most impact to the adjoining neighbors. Um, and do you want to, can you say anything else about it?
Um, so the reason we chose Stone Falls was just, it's the only real, and Kyle touched on this, part of the area that has neighbors that are not part of the association that would be affected by the noise of the gas blowers. Um, and it was kind of a.
I would just stop you there for a second.
Sure.
Because the intention of this legislation is not the noise. It's, it's not the noise. It's the two-stroke gas-powered leaf blowers. That's the intention of this legislation, as far as I know. But no, I'm, I'm glad that you're able to, you know, hopefully this is a good start.
Right. And then that, again, that's, we, we carved out that area being that it's, like Kyle said, a self-contained area. Our, our biggest issue with the, um, or difficulties with the, uh, electric stuff is that it just doesn't last long enough. Um, within two, three hours, those batteries are well depleted. And granted, we can have additional batteries. They, they cost more, and they're just, it takes, the amount of time it takes to charge them. And also the, um, they're just not as efficient as the gas, the gas equipment. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't have the, uh, the power that, uh, the gas equipment would have. So it just slows down the whole process. And we're already on the property for a whole day with a seven-man crew. Um, so to, to implement, uh, electric throughout the whole property, that's where the thirty thousand extra comes in for the additional equipment and the additional manpower that, and possibly turns into a second day of, of work, um, which would include noise for a second day versus being able to get everything done in that one day. Um, so we, we, based on, if you, I feel we can get Stone Falls done with electric-powered equipment. And if we can continue with, uh, the gas-powered equipment throughout the rest of the property, and we're only blowing off any hard surfaces. Uh, we're not, you know, spending time on lawns and things of that nature. We're, it's just about cleaning the, the, the roads and the driveways and walkways. Um, and we've had other communities where we've reached, with Town of Austin is one of them, where we've kind of reached a compromise where they allow us to run gas-powered equipment at a half throttle, a maximum, um, to just, again, clean off impermeable surfaces versus full throttle, causing more emissions and whatnot. But to kind of combat the emissions, we've always kept our two-cycle equipment up to date. We switch it out every two years. Um, so it's kind of as new as it can be and still performing well without just, you know, spewing out any kind of, uh, emissions. And it's, again, it's a Red Max seventy-five-hundred, which, uh, has a stratocharged motor, they call it. And like Kyle mentioned, twenty percent less emissions and better fuel economy and all that sort of stuff.
All right. Before I ask more questions, other questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions?
Um, what equipment have you tested, the electrical equipment, and what is your impression of it?
Um, we've, we've tried a bunch, actually. There's Steel makes probably the nicest one, also the most expensive one. Um, and then anything from Greenworks to, I think, I forget the, uh, there was Ryobi's. We've tried all sorts of stuff. Steel is the, the commercial version of all that. And, uh, it's not even a backpack blower. It's still a handheld blower. So the, the efficiency isn't there. And then the, the backpack is actually the battery for the, uh, for the employee. And it's just, again, it just, within a few hours, those batteries are, are depleted. Um, and then we're switched, we have to wait or switch to, to gas power.
Okay. And as far as the half throttle, so Austining is allowing that?
Yeah.
And you're saying that it's actually giving, promoting less pollution?
Well, yeah, you're running, you're not running full throttle, right? Which we normally wouldn't be doing anyway, because again, we're just trying to blow off clippings and whatever leaves are accumulating, um, during the summer. And everyone kind of says, hey, there's no leaves in the summer. But for example, last year with the stress that the trees were going under from the drought, leaves started dropping in early August.
Right.
Last year. So we had, we had communities that didn't allow it, and we couldn't blow anything. And it just looks messy and unkept.
So that keeps the noise to a small level and also keeps the pollution down, which is your thought process?
Right. I mean, but, well, my thought process is that most of the village is not a, is not a homeowner, is an HOA. And so most of the village, you know, I, I, I think I'm taking issue with this sentence in here where it says, it was, it was, that the ban was intended by the village to regulate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers within the confines of village proper, where homes are located on small tracts of land in close proximity to each other. And I think that's, that's not a, I wouldn't say that's the intent of this legislation. We have two and three-acre properties that are also having to be part of this legislation as individual homeowners. So the individual homeowners throughout the, throughout the village are having to have their landscapers switch over to electric during a limited amount of time. That we're talking about May through October. We're not talking about leaf season. We're talking about, and, you know, I'm glad that you're willing to take the first step. Um, you know, personally, I don't think I'd be willing to grant the exemption for the full, uh, term of the contract at this point. Um.
It's gonna be the earlier of the end of the contract and what time Marco feels that,
Right, and we understand it takes time to catch up.
Right.
You know, certainly, I'd be willing to go one year now. I mean.
But as soon as the technology catches up, we will comply completely.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really about us catching up. It's really the battery technology.
Right, the battery technology.
You can have a battery that lasts all day, and it's a no-brainer. Like, do it. Just, uh, but until that's there, it's super difficult to, to take a property on at this size. And you mentioned, you know, individual homes that have two, three acres. We have probably more permeable surface, impermeable surface per unit than that two-acre home would have. Because again, we're not really concerned about blowing off the lawns. It's, it's the driveways and the, the roadways that we're trying to keep nice and neat for everybody.
I would point out, and I'm telling Mr. Camaro, a member of the board, I would get up to.
Understandable.
But already it's swelling a bit. But I, I would point out that from inception, Hidden Falls, for those clippings for leaf removal, we pay to cart it out. The village doesn't do that. We've been treated a little differently, uh, as a large tract of land, uh, and, and be responsible for almost twenty-seven acres from inception. We continue to do that today. So Marco's, uh, crew is there one day. It's done in a day. And they're responsible for taking out all the debris. And they do that year-round, not just grass clippings, but these as well. So the village is, is a slight beneficiary of that, but that's also part of the service and the providing of homes.
Sorry, we're experiencing some technical difficulties with the.
Streaming.
With the streaming.
Technology.
Thanks.
Also, I guess, one, one, one more point was Marco was making. He turns over the equipment every couple of years, two years. So if there's an upgrade in the quality of a gas-powered, you would switch over to that.
Yep.
Until you're, until you're ready and feel comfortable with the electric.
Yeah, honestly, it's, I, I have nothing against electric, other than it just doesn't last long enough.
Right.
Granted, I'll take the inefficiency, but it's just being able to give someone a piece of equipment that's gonna last them all day long. And, I mean, the performance, granted, it's probably never gonna truly match gas-powered. Uh, hopefully one day it will, but, um, until, until we get there, it's really hard to ask someone to take a property on of, and again, it's not just a property on a size of sixty units of the size.
Right.
That, that really, you know, if it was, if that was one house with just like one single driveway and all lawn, then we probably wouldn't be having this conversation.
Right.
The fact that, that there's sixty driveways, sixty walkways, sixty decks, sixty patios.
And, and twenty-eight acres.
Right. And that's a town road that we actually clean up for you guys and maintain for you without the town needing to come in and spend their resources. Like Tony said, we take away all of the grass clippings and the leaves and all that. And the town truck never has to come in there and, and do what the town is doing for individual homes.
Other thoughts? Conns?
We.
I've expressed my opinion. I mean, I'm.
Right, well, I, I just.
They deserve an extension. The question is how, 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 how long the extension you, we willing to go? Is it a two-year extension? Is it a one-year extension?
Right. I think we have only provided other, um.
With one year.
Properties with one year. So fortunately.
And, and hopefully the technology catches up. Hopefully, you know, maybe there's more of an investment to be made in the batteries. And, you know, I, I know a lot of other communities are going this direction as well. Others have gone a lot farther. They've completely banned leaf blowers of all kinds from, through that period. Others have banned gas-powered leaf, uh, gas-powered leaf blowers through the year. So I think, is everyone comfortable with the one year?
What do you say?
They still have, they still have to deal with the fact that they have a, that it's still gonna cost them next year another thirty, or the year after, I should say, another thirty thousand dollars. And if they go all electric.
Well, it sounds like it costs them thirty thousand dollars extra this year anyway.
Yeah, it's just unbelievable. But that's only because of the economy.
That's cost of living in.
For clarification, will we, a year from now, would we be able to come back to revisit the issue?
You definitely will.
No, what we'd be doing is, well, it would be a year from now. You'd be, you'd be granted the exemption through twenty twenty-four.
Right. Right.
Right.
Through, you know, all the way back up until May of twenty-five, essentially.
Yes.
Do you guys consider at all the two-year, just so that, because, uh, the, electric has been around for ten-plus years, and it's been a very slow crawl even to where it is today. Honestly, in the last three years, there hasn't really been any improvements in, in battery technology on our, on our end. Uh, still that same steel backpack blower that, not a handheld, but backpack battery. That's been out for about four or five years and hasn't really changed at all.
Right. I think.
I don't see it changing next.
I think the issue I have personally with doing longer than a year is that to date, we've only granted one-year exemptions. And if, you know, fifty percent of those, sixty percent of those exemptions come back a year from now and say, guess what? We've done it. We've, we've found that the technology is there, and we've done it. Um, then we're kind of sitting there.
Well, also, if the technology appreciably changes, the need to add on extra employees or extra hours may not be necessary. So that's why doing this one year at a time gives us a chance to review exactly where the technology is.
Chris just had a good idea. He was saying because they are, um, making an effort to use electric, and maybe if it might incentivize others if we do give them a two-year, because they are making an effort to use the electric. Um.
I mean, it's just a choice. Ultimately, it's all a policy decision. But I was thinking, since they are doing part-electric, maybe that would encourage others. They, they might get a longer extension if they do show efforts to do part of their property in electric. Just a thought.
Right.
Yeah, I, I concur with that. I think a two-year extension would be.
I'm disinclined. It's a small area.
I'm in favor of two.
Limebrook Club also is committed to changing over to partial-electric. So it's, and we only granted them one year.
But I, I, I actually like the half-throttle idea also personally. I think that cuts down on the noise and the pollution. And if they're implementing that as well, I, you don't think that that is a good.
There's no way to enforce, there's no way to know. There's no way to enforce it.
No, but. Whatever. Compliance.
Well, they're doing it for Austin. I mean, they're doing it for Austining. I mean.
Not willing to go more than one year. If other people want to do that, that's, this is a five-person board, so.
Yep.
Well, how do we know that you'll be doing half throttle? That's a good question if you.
They trust him.
I mean, it's, it's just, we tell them to, when they're in the Town of Austin, because the Village of Austin is actually different with the Town of Austin. They know that they're only running half throttle. And I think that's been for two years now. We've never had any issues with any neighbors or anything like that that went too loud.
Okay.
Mike, do you have any?
Half throttle, two-year extension.
If I can just add one, one more thing also. You'll notice a lot of times, and I, and I have videos of, because it actually drives me crazy. I see landscapers that show up to properties with ten backpack blowers, and these guys just walk in a straight line. We literally do that whole property with about two backpack blowers. Um, so, and granted, they're, it's the same two guys that are running through it all day, but we try to keep the noise to a minimum and just use what's actually necessary versus just overkill and try to knock it out of the car.
I agree.
I have another question. So you guys have selected an area where you're going to use the electric. Do you see potential for other areas, like maybe in the cul-de-sacs or other areas that could potentially also maybe be for electric in the future?
Um, yeah, again, if, if we're gonna do this on a multi-year basis, where we can kind of keep implementing it a little bit at a time, because what I'm, the reason we kind of chose that area is I feel like the batteries would almost be done, uh, would run out by the time we're done with that Stone Falls section. So if we wanted to, and if you guys were okay with it, we could probably recharge the batteries at the clubhouse, um, up until, because they kind of work from Stone Falls and work their way up Hidden Falls and Long Ledge. So even on, let's call it Park Ridge, which is kind of its own next look, look, we kind of fit, start the day off with, um, battery-powered and finish the day off with battery-powered and have gas in between.
Right. And that's also near the park, which is a positive thing. It's right near where everybody.
Yeah, that's why I kind of picked that. That's the entrance. I think it's a handicap entrance.
Yes. But there's a lot of pedestrians that use that park.
Yeah, you have people that walk down, down Long Ledge all the time.
Given the fact that we've only given a one-year exemption slash extension to everybody else who has applied, I would be loathe to grant more than one year at this point in time. As I said before, I'd like to see where technology is. And two, maybe as you say, you'll start with electric and say, oh, it's not so bad. We can keep pushing it. And you'll come back in a year, which I don't view as being burdensome, and say, well, this is what we've tried, and this is why we feel we deserve another year or two years then.
Right. I just, I'm just taking experiences from the past few years at other properties.
And all I'm saying is, unless this is a monumental economic burden to come here for an hour, admittedly, we may not be everybody's first choice of entertainment.
My hourly rate's very high.
Yeah, just, so the most I can go is one year.
What do you guys think?
I, 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 I think I recommend a two-year extension. I'm in favor of two years.
Yeah, somebody has to make a motion.
I make a motion.
With whatever conditions.
Well, definitely a two-year extension, uh, with half throttle.
Right. I, yeah.
Something to that nature.
Right. I, I think that that is, I think they're showing more effort than some.
Yep.
And most. So.
So the question, so if.
It gives him an opportunity to prepare, because in two years from now, it's gonna be still thirty thousand dollars.
I second that motion.
Now it's up for debate and discussion.
Well, you know where I stand. I don't, I think, I think that, you know, it really, just because we're only granting a one-year does not mean that next year we're gonna say no. I think we need to, this is our first year with this in, in place. We haven't even gotten through a year with this in place. And I don't want to hamstring it. And I think that you have to remember that ninety percent, eighty percent of our residents are not gonna be able to use a leaf blower May through October. And I think it's not unreasonable to say, let's give this a one-year trial and see how this works, and see what advances happen in that year, and what can be, what can come of it. And that a year from now, we revisit this, and, you know, and, and maybe it has changed, maybe it hasn't. And if it hasn't, then maybe we're granting a one-year, another one-year, or maybe a two-year next year. But I'm not, I'm not willing to just, you know, to say, all right, well, we're just, you know, we, we haven't even seen what this law is like in effect, and we're gonna already grant two-year exemptions.
So we've already.
I'm not ready for that.
We already offered the sooner of the technology catching up or the end of the contract. Certainly, we would.
Oh, definitely not going to twenty-seven.
Well, I'm not asking that. I'm saying the sooner of two years.
Right.
The sooner of the two years. And that can be a condition, that if the technology gets to the point where you're comfortable, and you will have to have done your homework and be comfortable, you could tell us the technology is there.
Can you explain to the, because I'm not the smartest person in the world, what the problem was with only getting a one-year extension, knowing that you are free to come back and get further extensions if it's merited?
I just think we don't want to be here every year if we could help it.
I, I understand that, but. I, I understand that, but.
There's an easy way not to be here every year.
Yeah, that, that's really not a very compelling reason from my standpoint, which is, we, we have passed a law. You're looking for an exemption from it and you're really saying, well, but it takes so much time to come here and try to get an exemption.
But we tried to give a lot of accommodations.
You're not tugging at my heartstrings, sir.
Now they're gonna get one year full throttle.
Mayor, can I just get a point of clarification? I just want to make sure that I understand the motion that's in front of the board. So the motion in front of the board is to grant an extension, uh, for two years, which would be through October first, two thousand twenty-five, uh, for, uh, requiring that they operate at half throttle and it would also exclude, uh, Stonefalls Court and Park Ridge or not Park Ridge?
No, just, uh.
Just Stonefalls Court?
Yeah, right.
Okay, I just, I just want to be clear on what the motion.
He said the following year, he would maybe, that's right, he did say he would.
So it's a question whether, but it's your motion, so you gotta, is it clarifying for which?
Uh, Stone and this, the, near the.
Stonefalls and Park Ridge.
Okay, so that is the motion.
Yeah.
No, it's twenty-five, October of twenty-five, which will bring you to twenty-six.
Yes.
No, for the next year?
October twenty-five will.
Well, that's the real answer. We're making accommodations and concessions to try and make it work and.
As I say, we've heard where the mayor stands and I'll tell you where I sit.
Okay.
One year. But Stephanie, the pressure is on you.
I mean, I kind of, I, it's, I mean, I have to say, I kind of like that they're making an effort to, um, you know, maybe set an example, maybe they could be an example to others of the changes and, uh, you know, the, um, things that they're doing to try and be compliant as much as they can. Like an incentive.
I, I, and I, and I'm not trying to be, be joking. Uh, my fear is that the example they will set is that everybody's gonna come back here and say, we want two years and you only gave us one.
True, that's very true.
That's, that's what worries me.
Can I, can I ask, did they offer, um, I don't want to use the word concession, but do they offer to use electric in certain parts?
Some did, yes.
Each, each parcel is sui generis and, you know, one can offer this, one can offer that. So what we've determined is we feel comfortable with one year to see where we are because as the mayor has pointed out, the law hasn't even gone into effect yet and people are already complaining. And so we're saying, we'll give you an extra year, let's see where we are after a year. Maybe it's not a big deal, maybe it is, as I said in the beginning, I'd like to see where the technology is.
We, I mean, we, we just run the risk at the second year. Go either way, right? It's either we got the second year or.
Well, that's the risk you run tonight. We could say no to everything. And so, yes, it's, you, you're, you're right in that it's not a guarantee, but it's not a guarantee no either. It's just, what we're saying is make your heartfelt plea a year from now if you feel you still need it. You, you, you're very persuasive.
For all we know, maybe next year you come back and say, you know what, we're able to do fifty percent. And then we'd say, oh, well, then, yeah, maybe we want to do it two years.
But the thing you guys have to, I think, understand from our view is that this isn't our first year. It's not, I understand it hasn't gone into effect in this town, but it's gone into effect in many other towns that we're part of. So we already know what we're already dealing with, uh, where you guys, this is kind of your first year coming up to it. So they don't agree, I'm just using past experience on other towns that have had these blower laws that, I, I can also say that there's, there's, like you mentioned, there's towns that don't allow any blowers. We just, we wouldn't even decide to work in this house. It just, it's just not worth it to us. It doesn't allow us to give the quality work that we're known for and we just walk away from stuff like that. So this is, this is, we have past experience where this is your first vote you're with.
The pressure's all on this woman over here, so really you have to make a case for her. She understands that she'll lose friends if she votes the wrong way.
David, are you kidding me? Is that like, I think, I think he, so does that, it's not like, I think that's like a pat. David, it is.
Peer pressure, huh? Peer pressure going on here. All right. So Mayor, it's up to you to really call for a vote.
Yeah, call a vote, get it over, move on.
Either they can withdraw it or you have to call for a vote.
I kind of feel like they're, they're, they're doing all these incentives, I don't know. I feel like they should get, you know, something in return for that.
Yeah, I agree.
Vote your heart, just understand the mayor and I will never speak to you with.
Come on, you guys don't mean that.
You should all know that we're, we're not glib about these things, we, we are.
We, we do take them very seriously, um, but we are also.
I didn't know it was my idea, it was just, it wasn't even a suggestion, it was an observation.
But maybe if every other application comes in, but if every people who come in, we could be like, oh, where are you using your electric blower?
That's five percent of the property.
Yeah, it's enough.
No, 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 they're doing more than just a small.
It's, it's four, it's fourteen percent with Stonefalls, with Park Ridge, it's another. Yeah, it's another eight homes.
I feel like if anything, if people come to us and they're like, oh, well, we heard you gave so-and-so two years, we could be like, yeah, well, where are you gonna use your electric blower? That's what they're doing.
Right, that's, that's, that's good.
Greg, show us more of that.
I like that, that's right.
So we have a motion, we have a second, let's take, let's take.
That's all, move on.
And the motion, and just so it's clear again, the extension to October first, two thousand twenty-five, which will get everyone, you to twenty-six, okay? But the reason we do it in October, so you have time to request, uh, an, an exemption again. Uh, and it would for, be operating at half throttle where the gas operates and it would not include any exemptions for Stonefalls Court and Park Ridge Court?
And a half throttle.
I said that.
Said half throttle, yeah.
You did, I'm sorry, I was too busy.
Yeah.
And, and I think it also needs to be urged that we all actually do take this very seriously despite my demeanor. Um, it's just that we sometimes just disagree as to what, what the solution is. But this is a very serious problem for our village.
I think it's for all villages and towns.
We can only control our village.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, yep, your thing.
Trustee Epstein?
For all the compelling reasons, yes.
Okay, trustee Fisher?
I'm so sorry, but yes.
Trustee Heiser?
No.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
John, Mayor Klein?
No. All right, see you in two years.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Please live by the word.
All right, moving on to resolution number two. Considering setting a public hearing amending chapter two forty, section nineteen point one of the village code to prohibit parking at the west side of Sleepy Hollow from Dorchester Drive to North Ridge Street and north side of Law Ridge Drive from Sleepy Hollow Drive to the cul-de-sac. This is a very long introduction to that.
Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three on the proposed local law amending the village code, uh, restricting parking on the west side of Sleepy Hollow from Dorchester Drive to North Ridge Street and the north side of Law Ridge Drive from Sleepy Hollow to a point two hundred and eighty-five, eighty-five feet in an easterly direction.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
That moves.
A second.
And I would, I would just say that this is just setting a public hearing, there is no action being taken on this today. However, if there are members of the public that would like to speak on this, please feel free. If this isn't a public hearing, all we're doing tonight, and just so you understand, just, just so you, just so you understand, all we're doing tonight is setting a public hearing. This has no effect on the, on, you know, the, the law itself.
Mayor, can I just give a little setup for it? So, so this is something where the police have put out temporary signs at, at, uh, at present and those signs are, are, tend to go, you know, they tend to not stay up all the time. Over time, they start to go away, they're just temporary. Um, so it was a recommendation from the police department that was discussed with the traffic commission and the traffic commission agreed with the recommendation and that's what brings it before the village board.
Okay, hi, I'm Jane Horowitz, fifteen Sleepy Hollow Road. I will just give you a two-minute quick blurb just as, to set the stage along with my neighbors, Michael Kimmel and Kevin, our new neighbor on Sleepy Hollow. So anyway, I was just surprised to read about the proposed regulations and two quick things. Um, as a thirty-year resident of the town, first of all, thank you to the mayor and trustees for a wonderful, wonderful village that you guys run. My first complaint in thirty years, so great track record, amazing. So anyway, I was just surprised to read it and two quick things. One is, it just seemed, to be honest, like it was sort of creating, what's the phrase, creating a.
Solution, looking for a problem.
Yes, a solution, looking for a problem, because basically, um, I can tell you undoubtedly that there are literally a handful of cars that park fifteen minutes in the morning during drop-off time on our street because I think they don't want to wait on the line and fifteen minutes at like three o'clock in the afternoon and then, and then they are gone. They are incredibly efficient. So there was really no traffic issue during the day, there were not cars parked along our street at all. Um, so that was sort of why I was like, why is this even a proposed regulation? You know, during construction, more than happy to accommodate the town and have everyone's gardener, service people, cars parked in front of my house. Happy to accommodate, construction's over. So I feel that now, you know, out of, you know, consideration for my side of the street, we don't really need everybody else's service people parked in front of our houses and for that matter, you know, out of consideration for them, if they had friends over, I'm sure they don't want to tell their guests that they can't park in front of their house. So it just seems sort of like creating this annoyance for like no reason whatsoever. So that's the one piece and then the other piece is simply the signage, which if you go down Sleepy Hollow, it looks like Manhattan. There are bright red signs on every utility pole, everyone's front lawn, there are twenty signs in front of nine houses. It is quite a sight. So if we do nothing about the parking, if nothing else, if you could just remove the signage from everyone's front lawn, that would be greatly appreciated. So that was, neighbors, anything you want to quickly add?
And if, I could just add one other thing that I didn't mention, it wasn't in the resolution, but the local law that's drafted, just for clarity, um, is only, it's from eight AM to four PM on school days only from September first to June thirtieth, I just want to clarify. I, I understand, I just want to make sure it was clear, cause I don't think that was clear upfront.
Michael Kimmel, nineteen Sleepy Hollow Road, I echo Jane and our thanks to you guys serving us and helping keep our community great. Um, and maybe this is for comment or a public hearing, the public hearing which unfortunately will be out of town for. So what I would be in favor for and would be supportive of no parking from Ridge Street to Law Ridge, that just that short, half of the block on Sleepy Hollow and not extended to the, all the way to Dorchester because that actually, there is some traffic issues from time to time at the top of the block towards the, towards Ridge Street. And so I don't know if the traffic commission considered that in talking with the police, but I would recommend that they talk about that and maybe consider that as a change or an amendment to this idea. Cause it's not necessarily a bad idea, but I, I think limiting it to just that area might serve the purpose that they might be trying to solve.
Why did this situation come to a head now? I mean, would, why'd the traffic commission bring it up to us and, or why'd the traffic get this request? Or this is all from the sergeant, uh?
I think it was because they had, if I can interject, it was this school, um, when they were rebuilding the school, people could not park there, so they parked on the local streets.
Yeah, they had, they had people picking their kids up there.
I think everybody knows too, there's the walkway that goes through to the school there.
Yeah, the easement area, yeah.
And we have a lot of the, as I said, we have all this temporary signs that are out there and it, it does look, it does not look great. And, um, and there was, you know, we do have this congestion of traffic, uh, on school days and dropping off and picking up and it was just, the thought was to make the area a little bit safer by putting the no parking in place during the school year. I don't know if the chief has anything you want to add to that?
Did we get any complaints from neighbors that, uh, it's too, there's a lot too much parking or too?
Sorry. Well, this was always intended to be temporary when, during the school construction because we didn't access the driveway. But once it started to happen, uh, it seemed to be something that didn't go away and people didn't go back, did not go back to the school. Through the entrance, they started using the, uh, the convenience of the easement from Sleepy Hollow. Um, and so we found ourselves creating a school guard position, which we thought was temporary and ended up being permanent and had to have an, an additional school guard at that location. And, you know, during the pickup and the drop-off, there is, um, there is, uh, uh, traffic that is dangerous because the cars are parked on both sides of the street and the road gets very narrow because of that. And that's why we put the signs up, because if we don't put the signs up, people will park. And since those signs are temporary and they don't last and people take them off to the lawns or the wind blows them down and they get wet in the rain, we wanted to have the ability to put permanent signs up, um, but you can't do that unless it's a local law, uh, authorizing it.
So really, this is a safety concern for the kids that use the easement and cross the street where their parents either drop them off or pick them up.
Right, and the road gets narrow, then cars park on both sides of the street.
That, I can understand what Michael had said about the, having no parking from the Ridge Street down to Law Ridge. That makes a lot of sense, that's, I can see that being a big problem because I think there's where there's a lot of concern.
So.
Well, they said they had to add a crossing guard, you said you had to add a crossing guard.
They added a crossing guard position.
Yeah, they created that, they didn't have them before, right?
Wasn't a cool school crossing guard before twenty-two.
Right, okay.
The, the issue, the issue is, is that what people, you know.
I understand.
People got used to this and it's easier than having to wait in line and drive into the school. So people can sign it so that their kids can walk home and instead they just meet them over on the side streets.
Right, that's, that's what happened and it became, a temporary solution became permanent.
So maybe they can put a signage that says, uh.
How about asking the school to?
Yeah, to address that concern.
Now that they address the parking.
It's, it's really, I mean, like, like, like Ms. Horowitz said, it's only a couple hours, you know, an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon, it's convenient. And, and I, and I, and I think it actually helps to alleviate traffic on, on Ridge Street because the school didn't take in consideration the, what the construction and the new layout of the parking lot would do to, to traffic on, on North Ridge Street. And it's traffic on North Ridge Street is much worse than it was before the construction and this actually helps alleviate the traction because it takes some of the congestion and puts it on, on your road unfortunately, but it's.
It's, it's literally, they're there ten minutes.
I, I understand that.
Right. It's like half a dozen cars, I don't think it's doing a lot to alleviate congestion. There's not a line of cars, there's like seven cars, ten cars.
Yeah, you know, that's, you know, less cars on, on Ridge Street that people have to wait in line or not have, have no business in the school, but they have to wait because they got stuck.
Yeah, I did.
To leave their house at the time they did.
And Greg, why, why eight to four? Why the entire day?
It doesn't have to be the entire day.
Oh, okay.
And we could, we could do.
Cause that seems like extreme.
We could do between, you know, seven and nine and, and two and, and three-thirty, I mean, we could do that too.
Well, I guess the concern is, you're, you're concerned more about signs too, right? It seems to be.
Well, the signs, the signs will have to be better because then it'll just be street signs.
So there'll be less signs, but there'll be permanent signs?
Yeah, so it'll, the signs will actually be better.
Is there a rule, um, in New York State as to how many signs there have to be in a certain amount of, um, space?
No, and, you know, and it's always been our intention to have less signs.
There is, and, and do you know what that rule is? Because I think they're also concerned with how many signs there are.
Yeah, there's a, there is a regulations, the manual and uniform traffic control devices. In order to be enforced, there's a spacing that you have to put in for the no parking signs.
Do you know what that is?
Oh, we don't, we have to look it up. It can be.
If they meet the spacing requirements.
That's right, not allowed, not supposed to, they are in some places, but you're not supposed to.
And the reason there's so many signs is we're, we're trying to prevent the signs from, from disappearing.
Right, I understand.
And what if you did just like parking, no parking on one side from nine.
That's what it is.
That's what this is.
Oh, that's what this is, oh, okay.
Which is why they're saying it's, they're forcing their neighbors to have their workmen go across the street.
Right, well, it seems crazy that it's eight to four.
Will the crossing guards still be there?
Yes. Maybe we could, we could, you could vary the hours, so it's just, you know, at dismissal and arrival time. I mean, I think that's, cause I can see, it's really, that's what we're doing this for, is for dismissal and arrival time. So if you did vary the hours to, for.
And school days only.
And school, oh, of course, school days only.
That's what it is now, school days only.
There's a new law, be school days only, all day.
If you're gonna do that, I'd suggest we do that today, this way you can then act on it later on.
Okay, so if we make those changes today.
Then you're fine.
Then we're fine with the public hearing.
And you could act that's.
And then also people would have opportunity to comment on what it would be.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so what would be reasonable there?
Seven, uh, seven-thirty, eight-thirty and probably two to three-thirty.
That's, is that gonna be hard to enforce, like we're just gonna have like a police officer stationed there, like.
No, but there's a traffic guard there, so we, we aren't paying somebody.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not.
He's not giving out tickets, well, you don't want to give out tickets.
That's not their job to do that, they don't have the authority to do that.
Yeah, they're just, they're just crossing. Yeah, they're just, they're just crossing.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, you'll get 80% of the people to cooperate, which is?
What do we, what do we think?
You know, not to go back to their own conversations, the long guys who are gonna recognize that they can't park in those tons, and that's, and that should be fine, that should be sufficient. Have you put them on the telephone poles?
Well, we'll.
They'd have to be on poles, I think.
Supposed to be on freestanding, but.
Yeah.
Put them next to the telephone.
I can't meet the spacing requirement, face a whole poll.
No, we have to, we do have to follow the manual in order to enforce it, but we'll put it, we won't put more than the manual allows.
I think you're gonna have some objections for people hiding polls in the middle of their lawn.
Oh, yeah.
We understand. We try to, we try to find a spot that's best utilized. Sometimes you can't, but you do try to utilize wherever we can.
Better than the, the meat and steaks.
Well, if the, the distance is regulated, as the secretary said, so you said, okay, only the regulated distance is only up to the crosswalk, then you don't have the problem of mandatory spacing beyond that.
Well, we'll do the least amount of signs we're required to do. We try to put it in locations. If we can move it a couple of feet here or there to be less visible, we do, but in some case, yeah, a lot of times, yeah, in between a property line where there's usually more trees or something like that, we try to space it if it's close.
And we've always been an effort to reduce signs, and, you know, the Traffic Commission, the Village Board has many times denied requests for signs because signs really don't do the job that they think they do.
Greg, do you think this is necessary, that?
Yes. Because we're gonna continue to put up these very unsightly temporary signs all year, and that's, and that is why we're doing this, is because we want to stop that.
Yeah.
Not to throw anything else in the mix here, but you have the same issue on Rocking Horse Trail. We are not supposed to have parking on one side of the street, and it's absolutely cluttered.
Yep.
Terrible. So I don't know, quite frankly, the signage is, doesn't really work, even though there are signs there too. People park there.
Enforcement works, but we can't have enforcement unless it's not.
I understand, so.
Right, right, it has to be signed in order to have enforcement.
In the code, yeah.
Right, okay.
So to clarify, 7:30 to 8:30 and 2:00 to 3:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
On school days only.
Yep.
School days only, yeah.
We'll modify the local law as.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we still have, it's still open for their comments.
No, I know, it's a public, this is what we're proposing for the public hearing.
And they have an impact.
You said to 2:00 to 3:30.
And let's make sure that, you know, everyone in that area is noticed.
Yep, we will.
Would you be able to have a map of where those signs would be located by then?
Um, yeah, we could do that. Yeah, we could do that. We'll have it before the meeting, we'll have it. We can do that.
Does it have to go through the whole, extend the whole street, or can you say to X point or like?
Well, Dorchester to Ridge, right?
Yeah, and also?
Also the, on law.
Yes, to the beginning of the cul-de-sac.
Do you feel like you need the whole street?
No, no, that's my voice.
Well, we, we could really reevaluate that also, because we're really basing on the, the location on what happened in 2020 when the, when the school entrance was closed. So we, so we probably can reduce the, the distance.
And let's see where the signs take us and the, and the spacing and everything else. Let's see, let's see, yeah.
Okay.
Now, we reduce the, the space, and then we find that it's not working, and we have to extend it.
You could always go back and revisit.
And it may need to be modified initially, initially, and see how that goes.
We'll talk and we'll see. It's always easier to go less, if we go lesser, it should be fine to keep the local law in place, but you want to keep them more restrictive and then cut it back in order to act on the local law. I'm trying to do it more procedurally, so if it's longer, it's easier to cut it back later. But if you extend it out, then you probably can't act on it right away. So let's, let's talk, and then maybe there'll be a suggestion at the next meeting.
I think it's gotta go at least partway to the Dorchester though, because otherwise, I mean, that's where the pathway is, is at Law Ridge.
Those are people parked is right next to the path to the town.
Right, maybe try and get as close as possible to it. No, I know.
It's only two houses in.
I've seen it.
Right, two houses to the pathway from Ridge Street?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Okay, all right, so we have, this is, this is again, a vote to set the public hearing on the proposed local law.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm forgetting now what the date was.
October 10.
Right, thank you, we'll see you on October 10th. Well, we won't see, enjoy your, enjoy your time away. Resolution number three, considering the approval of appraisal services for, for the NR, NRCS Recovery Buyout Program.
Ready to read the resolution? Is that what you asked?
Yes, we're, yes, we're, yes.
Okay. Whereas the Village of Rybrook has agreed to be a sponsor and coordinate the National Resource Conservation Service, or NRCS, Recovery Buyout Program, whereby property owners in flood-prone areas may agree to have their homes purchased and removed by the then-owned, then owned by the Village of Rybrook, utilizing NRCS funding. And whereas approximately 21 properties on Brook Lane, Wyman Street, Wyman Street North, and Rockridge Drive has, have applied to participate in the program, subject to receiving further information such as appraisal values for their properties. And whereas on September 1st, 2023, the village issued a RFP, or Request for Proposals, for an appraisal company to prepare appraisals for the properties that are participating in the program based on the property values as of the day prior to Hurricane Ida. And whereas, as, as of the RFP deadline of September 20th, three responses were received from the appraisal service companies interested in this project. And whereas, after considering the background, experience on similar projects, and costs, the village administrator recommends Collier's Valuation Advisory Services of Manlyus, New York, to be selected to provide this professional appraisal service for this project. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves Collier's Valuation Advisory Services of Manlyus, New York, to perform the appraisal services for the NRCS Recovery Buyout Program in the Village of Rybrook for a cost of $2,850 per appraisal, subject to the following conditions. A, any appraisal service agreement may not be signed or executed until the main NRCS agreement has been fully executed by both the Village of Rybrook and the NRCS. And B, any appraisal agreement with Collier's Valuation Advisory Service is subject to any language modifications approved by council, and be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
All right, Chris, you want to just give a little background?
Sure.
Exactly what this is?
Sure.
Which is a great step in the right direction.
Yeah, this is a significant step, which we're nearing the end of the master agreement with the NRCS, with Ralph DeMarco's help. So we're getting to that point where we're hoping to have that agreement signed, hopefully as soon as the end of the week. And in order to move forward, the next step after the agreement is executed is we need to have an appraiser, appraisal company who would go out and appraise the 21 properties. The appraisal is, they have to follow the specifications of a, the federal guidelines for appraisals. They also have to submit the appraisals to a reviewer with the federal government, who will review the appraisals, and there's a whole process to each of those steps. It's gonna be very transparent though, the homeowners will also receive copies of the appraisals. The value is the value, it's not a negotiable one. Either the homeowners will say, yes, we find that reasonable, we'd like to continue, go forward, or no, you know, we're not gonna participate with the program. So there'll be a choice. We're hoping that choice, our, my personal target is to get these appraisals done by the end of this year, which I've expressed to the appraisal companies. The recommendation for the appraisal company is to use this service, because this company also has extensive experience working with the National Resource Conservation Service.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
No.
This, this is a great program, and Chris, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, tremendous amount of work has gone into this, and we're looking forward to the next step of, of getting these appraisals, which, you know, again, like you said, it's helpful to have someone who's worked with the program before and, and knows what's going to be acceptable to the program, while trying to get our, for our residents, the best value that they possibly can on, on the houses.
And as I said, it will be transparent, and it's also, these costs are reimbursable through the program as well. So the cost won't, cost the taxpayers money to pay for these services. These are all reimbursable costs under the program.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Thank you, Chris. Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering renewal of a maintenance agreement with WatchGuard Video Motorola Solutions for Police Body Cameras.
Whereas on April 27th, 2021, the Board of Trustees approved an agreement with WatchGuard Video Motorola Solutions from Allen, Texas for the purchase of police body cameras. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to continue to have WatchGuard Video provide maintenance of the police body cameras. And whereas on November 8th, 2022, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a renewal of an agreement with WatchGuard Video. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the agreement with WatchGuard Video Motorola Solutions of Allen, Texas for the maintenance of police body cameras, subject to modification by council, and be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Nope.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering authorizing the use of village streets for the Tamarack Tower Foundation Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot.
Whereas the Tamarack Tower Foundation requests permission to hold the annual Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot on Thursday, November 23rd, from 8:30 AM to 9:30 AM. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the use of village streets on November 23rd from 8:30 to 9:30 AM along the route described in the letter received September 22nd from Elizabeth Roethfeld Event Chairperson. And be it further resolved that the village streets shall be used in compliance with the terms and conditions established by the Rybrook Police Department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Certainly something we've done every year, at least in recent memory, and glad it's continuing along. And if I've participated in the past, then mine is definitely more of a trot, not a run. But, and hope to again this year.
You've participated in the past, and yet you're mayor. Amazing.
Any questions, comments?
Nope. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, couple of items. We had a very nice celebration today, or sad, sad and happy celebration for Janice Kinnicky, who, who's retiring at the end of the week, and we're gonna miss her terribly. She's been an amazing employee for 26 years for us here in Rybrook, and just such a positive, nice person. She's, she's seen children grow up here and become young adults, she's worked with the adults, she's done extensive work on our travel camps and so many other programs throughout the village. So everybody knows Janice, she's always such a welcoming, happy face, and we're gonna miss her, but we also are very happy for her. She can spend even more time with her family, and that's really important to her, of course, as well. So best wishes to Janice. The NRC agreement, NRCS agreements, we talked about earlier, so we're finalizing, and then we can work on the appraisals, and then we'll take it to the next step. So that's all moving well. Lot of recreation, we have a lot of activities in October. The Portchester Fire Department Parade, which will also involve officials from Rybrook, that was moved due to rain to this Sunday, October 1st. That's at 3:00 PM, and that goes from Hawthorne down to the waterfront area. So that's a, a big event, celebrating the 200th anniversary of the department, as well as the county, hosting for the county, a countywide convention, so that's a big event for Portchester. So, you know, and now we, they've always asked us to include us in the, in the ceremonies as well, so that's very nice. In terms of recreation programs, we have a family mini golf on October 7th from 12:00 to 4:00 PM. That's the first time doing that event. We think it'd be a nice opportunity to get out with your families and have a nice day. October 14th is gonna be at 9:00 AM. We have our pumpkin patch, and last year that was hugely attended, huge attendance. We got down, I think, two pumpkins that were left. And at 1:00, we have a scavenger hunt on the same day. And then October 28th, we have our annual Halloween, our dog costume contest, which is always a lot of fun. Always looking for judges, so if anybody wants to be a judge, but that's a lot of fun. That's at 10.
Can I enter my dogs if I'm a judge?
Sure, why not? They won't win, because we, that wouldn't be appropriate, but you can enter them. They could still, they could still march or walk through. That's, that's at 10:30 AM. And then this year, for the first time, you know, this is something residents have asked for, is a trunk and treat event, which is going to be, you know, some communities have done this, and some residents have asked for this, and why don't we do that type of event? Well, why not, right? So we're gonna do that. We're gonna start a little smaller this year in terms of, you know, not having all residents bringing trunks. We're gonna decorate village vehicles, and we're gonna have a little contest, and we'll have village vehicles and from the different departments in Pine Ridge Park, and that starts at 12:30. It's only an hour, and you're gonna come, and we'll have the vehicles decorated for the departments and treats for the kids to, to give out and go to the trunks, and it's also a little contest. People can vote on which department did the best job. So that'll be, have a little fun with that as well. So that's all I have for today. well. So that's all I have for today.
Why are there only treats for the kids? It's sort of like ages.
Oh, I'm sure we can sneak a few to the adults, too.
Wait, what date was Halloween again, did you say?
It's Halloween and trunk and treat are, is October twenty-eighth. We do it right around holiday, uh, Halloween weekend.
Sounds good.
If you want, go to November, the Fit Walk.
Oh, then the Fit Walk, yep. We can move to November if you like. And then, then the Fit Walk is November fifth, right? Trustee Epstein, fifth?
October fourth. I'm sorry, November fourth.
November fourth.
November fourth.
November fourth. And again, that's always, this is the first time we've done two in a year. And, uh, so we're excited and we're hoping to have a great turnout and sounds wonderful for everyone. Nice weather. We'll have giveaways and, uh, it'll be a lot of fun.
Great, thank you, Chris. All right, so moving on to new business. Uh, the public workshop on New York Forward Grant for Central Business Area in the Village of Rybrook.
Okay, so we are, uh, making a very concerted effort to try to get this New York Forward Grant. It's a very competitive grant. And, uh, this is one, it's a very expensive grant, too, but it doesn't require a contribution from the village. But, uh, so it's covered by the federal, by the government, uh, under the New York State program. But it is, again, very competitive. So what we're looking to do here is what's in our comprehensive plan. So this is something that we have, all, all that's in here is items that have been raised in the comprehensive plan as things we can look to do to make our, our downtown more pedestrian-friendly, a little bit easier to get around, uh, also do wayfinding and branding. So there's a complete, uh, complete streets improvements, trying to enter more of a, a walking street skate into that area, adding sidewalks on like the Wind Ridge side, which as we all know, gets adjusted on one side. So that would involve some retaining walls and, and, but making it very attractive and making it very, um, more pedestrian-friendly. And also other types of roadway improvements, uh, uh, smart, smart signals and things like that that we can do to make it flow better. And again, the community branding is something that we've discussed as well, to try to make, you know, really show that this is Rybrook's, um, downtown area or area that where people can come. And it's already a busy place, but we want to make it, you know, really, uh, even improved from a walkability, drivability, uh, make it more pedestrian-friendly and, uh, invite people there to go in from place to place. So this is the, if, if we are selected to go to the next step, there's a lot more out, community outreach and, you know, visioning sessions and so forth. So this is the beginning steps of what's in our comprehensive plan. So if we're selected, then we have to do a lot of collaboration with the residents, with the businesses, and to try to get everyone to buy into a particular design for improvements in that whole area.
Who's writing the grant?
Our grant writer.
This application?
The grant writer.
The, the firm that we've hired to do the grants.
Yep. And we, we assess providing all the data and information, like from our comp plan and, uh, other things that are out there. So they're just doing the, they do the grant services. I think it's a four and a half, up to four and a half million. And there's other options where they could give you two and a half million. So there's different options, but again, there's not a local contribution.
Chris?
Yes.
I, I take it that it's not simply a question of being eligible for a grant, that there's some, almost like a competition?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
And how many grants are gonna be given?
I don't know. Oh, I think there's only, there's only, statewide, there's only gonna be three or four.
And I assume every hamlet, village and municipalities probably apply.
But the more, we've, we applied it one another time. And from what they say, the more you apply and refine the grant, like I had a, our grant writer and myself, uh, we, Kim, Michael, we, we had a conference call with the reviewer to go over the strengths and weaknesses of last year's and how we can improve it next time. So as you go through it, you look ways for ways to make your grant more competitive going forward.
So are we having input in the grant writers', uh, process?
The narratives and all that? Sure. Yeah, we review all of that. And we provide the backup for it as well.
And this is tied directly to our comprehensive plan, which it's great to have that in place to be able to show how this isn't just whimsical.
Yeah. No, and our comp plan, if you recall, we have all sections. Like, one of the things they like to say is, do you have anything that refers to the types of improvements? Well, we go right to our comprehensive plan as our long-term plan to show how we want to make these improvements. There's actually sketches showing what the pedestrian walkway would look like, um, potentially. And basically, some of that was involving bringing more, some of the, changing some of the parking off-street and bringing the, the businesses, I think, a little closer to the roadways and redesigning that. So there's a whole lot of stuff in our comp plan. It's worth, it's worth another look.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that all of the effort that, that they're putting in to writing this is also what we have learned, because, you know, it makes like.
Yeah. Well, that's why, that's why we met with the state to say, all right, what was the strengths and weaknesses of our last application? How can we make it more, how can we make it more competitive going forward?
Excellence. I really wish them to.
Each step, you try to make it better.
And what does this do?
Um, the Friday. That's why it's on the agenda. You don't have to act on anything. You just have to have it discussed at a public, a public meeting. That's why it's before you tonight.
Which we're doing.
Yep.
Excellent.
That's all.
I think there would be great improvements.
Chris, quick, quick.
Yeah, it would be great if we, if we were awarded this grant.
I want to change, I want to change the subject, but I'm thinking about, uh, Rybridge. Is there any progress on the park in the back that's been?
Uh, it's in litigation.
Still in litigation?
Yes.
And the dog park, is that opened or closed?
That's part of the litigation.
That's closed, as well as the parking area.
It's got toxic soil.
When do they, is there a light at the end of the tunnel with this?
This, this is a discussion for executive.